Town Council meeting in the town of Maryville is called to order at 6:30 PM. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Christopher Perez from St. Andrews Angelican Church, and also please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow our head and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another new year. We ask that you be with the Town Council in 2015. Give them wisdom, give them knowledge, be with them. We ask a blessing tonight on the police officers that be protecting the streets of Maryville, the firemen that protect our homes, and finally, a special blessing on the young men and women that will be sworn in tonight as new police officers. Be with them, protect them, give them wisdom, give them knowledge, be with their families, give them comfort when they're away from home. All this, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Spann's here.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garachak?
Present.
Barron?
Here.
Pettit?
Here.
Whitey?
And Miano?
Here. Six councilmen present. Petitions, communications, and remonstrations, we begin with the election of Town Council Officers.
Madam President, I make a motion that we elect Tom Garachak Town Council President for 2015.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit to elect Councilman Tom Garachak as President for the year 2015, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
You're closed? Madam President, I make a motion we close nominations for President.
Nominations for President closed by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garachak?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
And Miano?
Yes. Motion carries six to zero.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for Sean Pettit to be Vice President.
Second.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Hardaway, for Councilman Sean Pettit to be Vice President for the year 2015.
Make motion for nominations to be closed.
Second.
Nominations to be closed, motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Spann. Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garachak?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Councilman Sean Pettit to be Vice President for the year 2015.
Oh, don't give him a hammer.
Give him a hammer, huh?
Give him a hammer.
Okay, the first order of business is going to be the swearing-in of the officers. Any family members that are here to take pictures of anybody that is getting sworn in tonight? You can take a picture from anywhere you would like in the council chambers. If you would like to come up here as they're getting sworn in, we don't mind. Take the best pictures that you would like to take. Anywhere in the council chambers you want to take a picture, we're good with that, so...
So, you want to come up here, like, swim up here, or you want to do it over there? You're the chief, I'm just a clerk.
And, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna announce the names, and I'm sorry if I butchered the Sheen, Lito, Chad, Stanek.
Sean, Lito.
Sean.
Sheen.
Sean.
Sean. That's another way to spell Sean, Mr. Garachak. I know I'm the only, I don't know if I'm the only Sean in town, but I doubt it. Chad Stanek, Timothy Michaels, and Spencer...
The Benadette.
The Benadette.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't help you with that.
Okay.
You guys ready?
I'm ready.
I repeat after me, you'll be out going slow and easy. I state your guys' names.
Aye.
Fully swear?
Fully swear.
That will support the Constitution of the United States?
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America?
Of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana?
And the Constitution.
That will faithfully?
Faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And honestly discharge my duties?
And honestly discharge my duties.
As a Maryville Police Officer?
As a Maryville Police Officer.
Town of Maryville Police Department?
The Town of Maryville Police Department.
In Town of Maryville, Indiana?
In Town of Maryville, Indiana.
According to the law?
According to the law.
The best of my skills?
The best of my skills.
And ability?
And ability.
To help the God.
So, yeah.
Congratulations, you guys are wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. A promotion? Already?
Yes, sir. You're welcome. How you doing, Sean? This is stupid.
Mr. President, members of the council, I request that the council amend the agenda to add, you've been distributed a copy at your seats, Resolution 15-03 for consideration under Old Business, along with the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement related to the South Shore. Submove, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Council, by Sean Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron for adding Resolution 15-03, Resolution of the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between several Lake County government entities with the purpose of providing resources to support the extension and the improvement of commuter rail transportation services provided by Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That be added to on the consent agenda. The consent agenda, council payable register voucher for January 13th, 2014, and approval of Town Council Meeting Minutes?
Hello?
For December 23rd, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, seconded by Councilwoman Miano for the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, budget and finance. I just would like to tell everybody that I was pleased with 2014. We ended on a positive note. We're finally seeing our heads above water, so that's the only thing I have on my report. Anybody else under budget and finance? Seeing none, Public Works, Mr. Pettit?
Uh, the guys have been out. Once again, our streets look better than the state of Indiana's, which Bruce, I guess to Kevin, is a, is a compliment. Did you mention that we've got new trucks coming in?
Um, we've got two of the spall dumps that we use. We have two new ones that was bought through the RDC. One's being paid through by the Mississippi Street Tiff, and one's being paid through by the Maryville Road Tiff.
Okay.
Because they'll be used for maintenance.
When are they gonna be delivered?
Should have them next week sometime.
Okay.
I got one thing under Public Works is that, you know, we didn't mention this at the start of, in December, when it became, when we knew that we were gonna have a problem with the people parking on the street again with the two-inch snowfall. I know that last week, when we got the first big snow, Vicki went through, my ward first, and she tagged thirty cars. So, we would like to remind the residents that the two-inch snowfall is in effect, and that if you, you know, you, the first time around is a warning, but anything after that is going to be, you're gonna have to go to Steve's or Sampson's to get it back.
Yeah, Vicki was at one end of town, and Tiffany was at the other end of town, and Stacy's actually put it on the sign out front that says "Two-inch Snowfall Parking Is In Effect."
Right.
Can we get a press release maybe to, out tomorrow to the press? We can do that. Karen and Chaz, maybe you can put that in there as an article for us, please?
Yeah. And remind them as well, guys, the policy is that the guys open the major thoroughfares first.
Right.
And then we hit the, the smaller roads, and then the courts and the cul-de-sacs. I got a couple calls out, one cul-de-sac out in the Panhandle, guys called a couple times. Rich Kandera was nice enough to try and explain it to the gentleman on the phone, he still called me, and, you know, we've got to open, especially out in my area with blowing and drifting out by Gene Clay and Grand and Randolph and Ninety-third, those get blown over, those have got to be opened first for the school buses, and then we go into the subdivisions and get the courts and the cul-de-sacs, so...
Just another reminder too, I'm sorry, mailboxes, if mailboxes get knocked down, I got a phone call the other day, they wanted their mailbox put back up. We don't, we can't dig any holes in the ground this time of year, the ground's frozen. We put up a temporary mailbox for them, and he seemed to be upset that we weren't gonna put a new mailbox up for him. I said that we will not do anything until the spring, so, I mean, just gonna have to bear with us.
And one other thing on the towing of the cars, because Vicki had a concern the other day, that when they get ready to tow cars, they have to go up and knock on the people's door and say, hey, you know, we're gonna tow, you know, either move it or we're gonna tow it. She expressed a safety concern, that when they go knock on these, because some of these people gonna be pretty irate when they knock on their doors. So, what I, my recommendation to her is that when she's got it, when we got to start towing, contact Joe in the group, and let's get some assistance out there, because we don't want to put our employees in danger now.
Do you?
Trying to do their jobs.
Joe, I mean, is that something that would be a practice, where you would knock on the door? I don't think so.
We've done this in the past, Rich, and the girls call me, I'll go up there personally, whoever's available will be up there if they've got any issue. No problem. I've heard of having us up there, then have something happen.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all I got on it.
Anybody else under Public Works? Council Affairs, Councilman Span?
Yes, I was looking over this literature I got from Brian Dearing about the nightclubs' violence reduction program outline. This is a pretty good outline. I'm thinking we still need to go one step farther as a town. There's a town that has a, a commission that reviews this, these nightclubs, keep that violence and all the rhetoric out, and I think that would be the wisest move, but add something on to the ordinance, saying that when they get their permit, that they can be involved with that committee, to show them how they're gonna secure the outside and the inside of that club, because that's where the violence takes place, or whatever the shenanigans take place.
Is that something that would have to go through the Plan Commission, too? Sean, do you know?
I was thinking...
No, I don't, I mean...
Nightclubs that go through the Portisoning Appeal...
Portisoning Appeal's a special exception or use...
But I mean, as far as anything amending to our ordinance or anything like that, would that be a, I don't know, it might be a nuisance, Mr. Bishemi?
I think what, what Councilman Span's discussing is simply adding this additional component to the material that Mr. Dearing has already submitted to the council regarding the proposed new nightclub regulatory ordinance. So, I think we're just talking about the new nightclub regulatory ordinance whenever the council's ready to consider that.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else under Council Affairs? Moving on, Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, hiring of the Parks Director, Park and Recreation Director?
Mr. President, as a member of the Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits Committee, and since you're presiding officer, can't make a motion. I make a motion that we hire Jan Orlich as our new Park and Recreation Director at a salary of, I believe, fifty...
Fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three thousand dollars, along with full benefits. This will be a ninety-day probationary position per the Personnel Policy. Is there anything else? Bruce, I need my full, full-town benefits?
Right.
Along with the use of a car during business, for work-related business.
Business hours, yes.
Business hours. That's my motion.
Second.
With free pizza on Fridays.
And her start date will be January fifteenth?
I'm sorry, yes, January fifteenth, the Thursday.
Uh, I have a motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garachak?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
And Garachak?
Yes, motion carries, six to zero. At this time, I'd like to introduce our, our new Parks Director, Jan Orlich. If you could please stand up.[966.00][966.00](Applause) He's willing to sit and join us. There you go. Yeah.
All right. Get them six.
All right. Anything else under Personnel, Employee Benefits? No, seeing none. Public Safety, Mr. Whiting, does everybody have anything? Chief, do you have anything under Public Safety?
Uh, we need to appoint one Police Commissioner.
Yes, that'll be under New Business, that'll be taken care of. All the appointments will be taken care of under New Business. Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
Okay. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Span?
This is Toggy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Members of the council, the council members, you have in your packet the three items that are listed on the agenda, the Request for Eligibility, the Assurance of Compliance Document, and the Assurance of Handicap Accessibility Compliance. Each of those three documents need to be approved. I recommend they be approved separately by motion and vote. It's not necessary that there be a roll call vote, but each of them should be approved and signed on the signature formats for the council.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start with the beginning. Request for Eligibility to Participate in Federal Land and Water Conservation Funds and Programs. Submove. Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron for approval of the Request for Eligibility to Participate in the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund Program. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Assurance of Compliance with Title VI?
Yeah.
Um...
Submove.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Miano for Assurance of the Compliance with Title VI. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Assurance of Handicap Accessibility Compliance?
Submove. Second.
A motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span for the Assurance of Handicap Accessibility and Compliance. All, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else under that Toggy that we need to do tonight?
There is, there is one additional document, and that's going to be taken up as the second item under Resolutions in the latter part of the agenda, Mr. President.
We just have to get all those documents signed, so nobody leaves until they get these signed, because he has to send those off tomorrow morning. Okay. All right? Just be patient after the meeting, and we can get some documents signed. Sure.
The plan has to be delivered to state by January 15, and we will overnight mail comments.
I thought maybe you were gonna drive it down in the morning.
I will be happy to do that.
No, we'll get charged, Tom.
We will. I thought that was in the original.
I do wanna, if you're older, I do wanna congratulate you. First of all, you already approved one of the recommendations of the plan, that is hiring a new director, and I also wanna thank publicly again for all of the help we received from our managers during preparation of this plan. This plan is active for the next five years, and I'm pretty sure your director is gonna be very busy implementing it. I'll be happy to answer any questions. She won't get a full copy of it, yes. But she did receive an executive summary.
I emailed her one this morning.
Oh, okay. She has already received. Okay.
Anything else, Toggy, that we need to do tonight, other than that resolution? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else under Parks and Recreation? Moving on, Environmental Affairs, I'm gonna defer to Matt Lake, and I don't know, you might want to expand on our adventure that we've had the last few days, too.
Oh, yeah. Well, first of all, we're moving forward with the hydraulic analysis of Ross Metal Farms through a contract with Christopher Burke Engineering. We'll use that data to formulate a plan for, for the drainage plans. Right after this information is gathered, we're gonna meet with the residents around there, and, you know, basically sit down and let them know the options, so they can move forward with that. Also, I was selected to speak at Prudential Road School this year on a topic of municipal stormwater management and urban forest impacts. We just updated some of our yearly contracts. We're gonna stick with aquatic weed control to treat Bonaire Lake for algae, and we're gonna stick with the Lake County Stormwater Conservation District to conduct and continue to conduct public education outreach within the local school system. I also received confirmation that we'll become a Tree City USA for the year 2015, and as Tom mentioned, we had actually had an issue over on Tany Place. We believe it's a water main, or a water line break. We haven't just figured out the source, but we're protecting a home right now. Because of the icy conditions, we had the sandbag, and we actually had to add some salt to melt down an area where the water runs, so I don't know if you want to expand on that at all, Tom, but quite an adventure today, and since Thursday, really.
Yeah, we've been out there looking at this, and Indian American Water's been out there, Utilities Inc.'s been out there, IHCD's been out there, everybody's been working together to try to figure out where this problem is and what, and what's going on over there. I mean, it's just a ponding and pooling of water, and we have no idea where it's coming from, or, so, just trying to work together and work through this. Hopefully, it stays frozen. So, that's all I have. Anybody else under Environmental?
I have one thing, Mr. President. On December the 12th, the 54th, East 54th Court Rain Project received another award. This one came from the Crossword, Crossroads Chamber, and it's for Landscape and Architectural Excellence and Design. The award's dated December the 12th, 2014. Again, Mr. Lake and his group are to be commended for not only the work that they did on East 54th Court, but for all the work that they continue to do as regards to stormwater within the town, that continues to make us the model that everybody else wants to copy off of. Again, thank you, Mr. Lake.
Thank you for your support. Thank you, guys.
Anybody, anybody else under Environmental Affairs? Seeing none, Elections and Public Relations, Mrs. Miano?
Uh, yes, through Maryville Senior Services, AARP, will begin their tax preparation beginning on February 3rd. On Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, from 1 o'clock, or from 9:00 AM to 1:00 in the afternoon, appointments can be made through 769-3501. That is my report.
Okay, do we want to do a press release on that, maybe?
Yes, that would be, please.
We can get a press release on that, too, Bruce?
Okay.
When you're doing the other one. Anybody else under Elections and Public Relations? Seeing none, Economic Development, anybody have anything? I don't have anything. Utility Liaison, Mrs. Barron?
Yeah, we do have enough caps to receive two benches. I want to encourage all the residents of Maryville and everybody else who has been contributing to the cap program to keep the caps coming, because there are other programs that we can use the caps on in the future. We want to make sure that we do have enough to receive the free recycled material benches or picnic tables or anything else that comes along. Also, I have been contacted from the environmental chairwoman of the Environmental Students to be a guest speaker at the Maryville High School, which I will be getting a date soon for that, so I think that's taken off pretty well. That's in my report.
Anybody else under Utility Liaison? Seeing none, Moving on, Town Government Reorganization, Mrs. Miano?
No report.
ADA Compliance, Mrs. Miano?
No report.
Abandoned Properties, Mr. Hardaway?
Next meeting is next Wednesday, January 21st, at 10:00 AM. Mr. Bishemi?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Anybody else under abandoned properties? Seeing none, Moving on, General Ordinance, First Reading Ordinance. Ordinance 15-01 is an ordinance of Town Council of Town of Maryville amending the Ordinance 1437, which amends the existing park impact fees ordinance by adjusting the amount of the fees. Submove.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of Ordinance 15-01.
This is, members of the council, this is simply a change in the effective date of Ordinance 1437. We originally had the effective date for the new fees as June 1. By law, we are to allow six full months after approval for the fees to be effective, so this ordinance changes the effective date to be June 23rd, 2015, for the new impact fees.
Well, question though, Mr. Bishemi, if it's six months from the day we pass, a couple questions. Number one, do we need to pass this on, suspend the rules and pass it on second reading? Number two, is it six months from Ju, why is it June, December 23rd and not tonight? We're passing this ordinance.
I can answer that, Councilman. The statute requires that the effective date of the new impact fees merely be six months from the effective date that they were enacted, and they were enacted on December 23rd.
Okay.
So, we're setting the effective date under this ordinance, which I would ask that you pass tonight on both readings by suspending the rules. We're setting the effective date for the new rates, the new impact fees, June 23rd, 2015.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey?
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, six to zero.
Motion to suspend, Mr. President.
At this time, we're gonna suspend the rules, and it's a motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway for suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're gonna read Ordinance 15-1 on second reading, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville Town Council of Town of Maryville amending Ordinance 1437, which amends the existing park impact fee ordinance by adjusting the amounts of the fee. At this time, it's a second reading ordinance, so I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anybody have any public comment on Ordinance 15-01? Anybody have any public comment? Public comment. At this time, I'll close the public comment on 15-01.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
And Garachak?
Yes, motion carries, six to zero. Ordinance 15-2 is an ordinance of the Vacating the Water Utility Easement in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Miano for approval of ordinance fifteen dash two. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Guernsey, roll call vote, please.
Man.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Barron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
And Grouachek.
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Um, now, we're gonna add in the resolution of fifteen dash oh three.
That's actually under old business, Mr. President. We still have to do, uh, fifteen oh one and fifteen oh two as listed.
Mr. President, a point of clarification, Mr. Buscemi or to Durinda, uh, on the vacation at Easement, so those require, uh, two readings, John?
Yes, it's an ordinance, so you'll hold it over and consider it as the next meeting on second reading.
Next meeting, is that? Okay.
It has to be advertised, right?
No, I don't think the vacation does. No.
It does not, but it requires-
I didn't know if there was a request by the petitioner. For those that aren't aware, this is for the assisted living, uh, over by courtyard by Marriott, uh, off Eightieth Place. I didn't know the petition was in the audience. Do you need to get started? I guess, obviously with the weather, you're not going anywhere.
Right, well, the, the lines in the ground, we're just waiting for final connections from Indian American Water, so.
Okay. I guess with the weather, we could wait till two weeks. Okay. So, you're okay waiting the two weeks, then?
Well, no, I mean, we, ideally, we'd like to have a second reading tonight if possible as well, 'cause um, we're gonna be applying for the, uh, for building permit here soon and, um, you know, we just like to get going if possible.
After discretion of the council?
I'll make a motion to suspend, Mr. President, it's in my ward, so.
Motion to suspend the rules for hearing of ordinance fifteen dash oh two.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Miano for the suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, ordinance fifteen dash oh two is on the second reading, an ordinance vacating a utility easement in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Met, motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Miano for the approval of ordinance fifteen dash two on second reading. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment on ordinance fifteen dash oh two. Public comment, any public comment on fifteen oh two? Any public comment on fifteen oh two? At this time, I'll close the, uh, public comment, uh, on fifteen oh two. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway. Barron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
And Grouachek.
Yes, motion carries six, uh, six to zero. Second readings, there is no second readings, we've taken care of that all already. Uh, resolution fifteen oh one is the resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing temporary loans to ful- fulfill monetary requirements necessary for debt service payments retroactive to one twelve of fifteen.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Miano for approval of resolution fifteen oh one, seconded by Mr. Pettit. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution fifteen oh two is the resolution of the Park Authority of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and nineteen park and recreation master plan.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, seconded by Mr. Span.
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'm gonna bring up resolution fifteen oh three. At this time, I'm gonna claim that this is gonna be a conflict of interest for me because I'm, I'm in Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District, is my employer, so this is a conflict of interest of me. I am not for this, I am not against this, and I will excluding myself from the vote on this, uh, thing.
As presiding officer, Mr. President, you can still read it into the record and allow the vote to be conducted.
And at this time, I would ask that, uh, Mr. Pettit, you would sign this resolution, uh,
Orders.
as a, as the, um, vice chairman.
Okay.
All right. A resolution of Town Council, uh, fifteen oh three. Resolution of Town Council of Maryville, Indiana, approving the inter-local cooperation agreement between several Lake County government entities with the purpose of providing resources to support the extension and improvement of the commuter rail transportation services provided by the Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Pettit for the approval of resolution fifteen oh three. And roll call vote on that, I'm gonna have to ask for.
Okay. Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Barron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
You have to ask for me. I want that on the record, too.
Grouachek.
Uh, I'm gonna have to abstain from this. Uh, motion passes five to one with one abstention. Um, BZA action, any BZA action, Durinda? Old business, inter-local cooperation agreement, uh, we already took care of that.
Yes, by virtue of passing the resolution, uh, you're authorizing signature on the interlocal agreement itself. And then, Bruce, you'll, uh, you'll forward, uh, to the appropriate individuals both a copy of the executed interlocal and a copy of the resolution, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. I'll just need to change how I think they both list Carroll as Town Council President. We'll have to make those changes, then we'll get them signed.
Very good.
Under new business?
You know, I have, uh, something has to be signed from the council on, uh, on our, uh, our EMA EMS ambulance service like this, we have to close it out. We've written by the state a couple of times. Also, I want to read something, I don't know if the right time to read it or not. Anyways, the Sunday paper on December twenty-eighth, there's an article, and I took offense to the article. I'm, I'm not a Town Council member, I'm a, I, I, I work with the council all the time, I'm the clerk treasurer of Town of Maryville. It said, "The Town of Maryville," and this is comments made by Rich James in the column. It said, "The Town of Maryville to become a city so that a mayor, rather than the seven dwarfs, can't provide much needed direction for the future." First of all, I, I take offense to anybody calling the seven councilmen dwarfs. These councilmen, basically, they, they do the job by what, with the, with the voters and the people in the area telling them what to do. And this is my letter back to, I wrote to the, uh, Times editor, Mr. Bob Hess editor. Sunday morning, I opened my newspaper and as usual started to read Rich James' column. I hold much respect for Mr. James, he's very outspoken, usually write about his common, but I did take offense to the statement he made about the Maryville becoming a city. I agree with him, the Maryville should have become a city years ago, but at that time, citizens didn't want it. As a city, we could have stopped Hobart from annexing the mall. The mayor of the city is responsible for the direction of where a city is going. And it's easier for the voters to say whether they are satisfied with the mayor by either re-electing the person or looking for a new mayor with a different direction. In my personal opinion, there are five great mayors in this region. Mayor Rand, Crown Point, Mayor Senacore, Senacore of Hobart, Mayor Snyder of Portage, Mayor Costas of Alprey, and Mayor Stoya of Whiting. Just by looking at these cities and their growth and direction, you can tell that all these mayors think outside the box. As for the article, the region's future, the statement, "Maryville, Seven Dwarfs" was way overlying, and our town council has been doing an outstanding job, working to make Maryville a great town or a great city if the voters want, but it's strictly up to the voters, not by a newspaper article.
Thank you, Mr. Guernsey.
Yes, thank you, James.
You're welcome.
That, excuse me, back to what you had, that needs to be signed, too. I think it's the write-off old bad debt for the-
Right, it is, right.
But they need everybody-
Passed it on to, uh-
Okay, they all need that to get signed, too.
Yes, it's signed here.
Mr. President, members of the council, the clerk treasurer has submitted to the council, uh, for your action, a statement pursuant to the requirements of the State Board of Accounts, and this is a statement regarding uncollectible EMS bills uh, and the uncollectible amount at the end of calendar year 2013 is the sum of one million, six hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars, forty-three cents. Uh, based on the town ordinance, uh, oh four dash twenty-three, uh, the town council is required at the conclusion of each audit year to approve the write-off of the, of these uncollectible debts, so it would be appropriate for the council to consider a motion to approve the write-off of uncollectible EMS debts that remained at the end of 2013 in the sum of one million, six hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars, forty-three cents.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of the uncollected bills from, uh, the EMS. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yeah.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
And Grouachek.
Yes, at this time, uh, we're gonna have to sign this, too, so. Anything else on the new business? At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, name the committees for two thousand and fifteen Town Council Committees. Budget and Finance, uh, chairman's gonna be Mr. Sean Pettit, uh, Mrs. Miano, and Mr. Hardaway. Uh, Public Works Chairman is gonna be Councilman Span, uh, Pettit and Hardaway. ADA Compliance is gonna fall under, uh, Public Works now. Council Affairs Ordinance, uh, Mrs. Miano will be the chairman, uh, Mr. Hardaway and Mr. Whiting. Personnel Employee Benefits, Mr. Pettit is gonna be the chairman and Span and Hardaway. Public Safety is gonna be, uh, Chairman, Mr. Whiting, Mrs. Miano, and Mr. Pettit. Uh, Parks and Recreation Chairperson is gonna be Mrs. Miano, uh, Mr. Span and Mr. Whiting. Environmental Affairs is gonna be myself, Mr. Grouachek, uh, Span and Whiting. Elections and Public Relations, uh, Chairperson is gonna be Mrs. Miano, Guernsey, Whiting, Span, Spires, and the new Parks Director, uh, Jan Orlich. Town Government and Reorganization is gonna be, uh, removed. Special Committee is gonna be Economic Development. Uh, Mr. Pettit is gonna be the chairman, uh, Mr. Span, uh, Mrs. Barron, and the chamber president, I'm not sure who the chamber president-
Sue Reed.
Skip Bozak. For two thousand and fifteen-
Yes, they're both the same.
Is gonna stay the same, so Skip Bozak is chamber president and Sue Reed is gonna be the econo-, uh, executive director. Utility Liaison Chairman is Mrs. Barron, Whiting and Span. Lake County Solid Waste is gonna be myself. Northwest Indiana Regional Planting Commission is gonna be Mr. Hardaway. Redevelopment Commission is gonna be Mr. Pettit, Mrs. Miano, Span, Hardaway, and Barron. The Redevelopment Authority is gonna be, uh, it was actually called the Economic Development Committee, but it was renamed the Redevelopment Authority in two thousand and fourteen, is Minchuk, Althoff, and Ward. And the Plant Commission, um, appointments, uh, is a four-year appointment, appointment by the Town Council President to fill the remaining of the term from two thousand and thirteen of sixteen. Must be an R, and Sylvia Kraft has resigned, so my appointment to the, uh, Plant Commission is a gentleman by the name of Robert Bigelow. And it's gonna be Mr. Pettit, Hardaway, Whiting, Deering, Holtz, and Paul Matier. Border Zoning Appeals. Border Zoning Appeals is a four-year appointment, appointment by the Town Council President. Move for a four-year term is from one, one of fifteen, two of twelve thirty-one of eighteen. Uh, the, the appointment is John Minchuk. And the second appointment is for, uh, the appointment of Town Council fills the remainder of the term that for Sylvia Kraft. And Robert Bigelow is gonna be the Republican replacement for Sylvia Kraft, and the term ends at twelve thirty-one of fif- through twelve thirty-one of fifteen, so that term will end at the end of fifteen.
And are you, uh, Mr. President, are you renaming Mr. Minchuk to the new four-year term for the other BZA appointment?
Yes, sir. So, the BZA will consist of, uh, Fortier, Holtz, Robert Bigelow, Minchuk, and Stajakovic. Uh, Fortier's appointment wasn't up. So, John did some research today on that.
And who's the elected, uh, Durinda, who's the elected member from the Plan Com- is Rick the elected member from the Plan Commission to the BZA? And who- And Sylvia Kraft? Okay. I guess, point of order, Mr. Buscemi, is it a Plan Commission action when we meet next Tuesday? I mean, I know, Mr., you know, it's usually the Plan Commission elects the two members to go to the BZA. Not in this case?
There, this particular appointment is, the appointing authority is the Town Council President. There is a separate position that you correctly pointed out, that's an appointment by the Plan Commission as a body itself-
One member?
Yes.
Oh, okay, one member only, okay, okay. Right, Rick's, yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, abandonment of blight, I hear that.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry, I, I didn't have that on there, but I, I will add that at, at the end.
Just checking.
Okay. Um, where are we at? Stormwater? Right. Stormwater appointment is by the Town Council President for a new three-year term. It's, uh, one, one of fifteen till twelve thirty-one of seventeen. My appointment to the Stormwater is, uh, Barbara Ghostin. At this time, the Police Commission, the appointment to the Town Council, the new three-year term would be of one, one of fifteen and in, in twelve thirty-one of seventeen. My appointment to the Police Commission is Pete Gip.
Now, members of the, uh, council and Mr. President, uh, that appointment must be approved by the Town Council as a whole, so if that would, it would be appropriate for the council, then, to vote on that as a body.
Right, we need to, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, John, double-checking the appointing authorities. I'll make a motion that we reappoint, uh, Pete Gip, uh, to the Police Commission, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit and seconded by Mrs. Miano for a Police Commission appointment of Pete Gip. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Historic Preservation Commission, um, Mrs. Miano, Pettit, uh, Durinda, Guernsey, Linda Petrush, Robin Sum, and Lori Volkovich. Uh, the Fire Territory Board will be, um, myself and Mr. Whiting. And the Abandon and Blight Committee, I'm not sure who's on the committee there, Mr. Hardaway, so.
It was myself, Mr. Span, and Mr. Guernsey.
Uh, at this time, I would reappoint that, uh, and you were the chairman of that committee. At this time, I'll re-point the, uh, three members to the, uh, Abandon and Blight Committee would be, Mr. Hardaway would be the chairman and then Mr. Span and Mr. Guernsey would be the, uh, appointments to that committee. Anything else, uh, under appointments?
Uh, Mr. President, the Fire Territory Board, uh, obviously has two council members and two township board. Do they, by, by ordinance, John, or by statute, do they handle? And then there's one citizen member that the four of you elect?
Yes.
Are there any of those appointments, do we? I guess that's amongst those four members, right, for the citizen appointment and?
It is, and, uh, Councilman, I apologize, nothing has been brought to my attention with respect to- with respect to whether any of those terms are-
I don't, I don't think her, her, her term's up until next year.
Okay.
But, um-
And the Advisory Board obviously appoints their two members that they choose amongst the three.
That's correct, they're the appointing authority.
And there was a question about the, uh, uh, the length of service on that, and we're gonna discuss that, uh, when, tomorrow night on the length of service, because we thought when we established it, that it was a four-year appointment. And their four-year appointment would end with their election year and then begin with their election year. So, their appointment would go this year and then next year, our appointment for the four-year appointment would be up. But supposedly, there's some other paperwork, so I was gonna give a phone call to Bill Touche tomorrow and discuss that with him because he's the one attorney that handles the Fire Territory Board.
Okay, and one other-
What he should refer to, Councilman, is, uh, the state statute and whatever the governing ordinance is-
Right.
The interlocal agreement for that entity, and I'm sure he'll be able to sort that out.
And it wasn't brought up, but it just came up to me, Tom, and I guess this is for you and Bruce to look into, um, our appointment to the convention in Visors Bureau, do we still have one and if it's up or not?
Um, our appointment is, um-
That's normally June or just-
Is it, Rich?
Right, um, Bob Forrester's our appointment.
Okay.
And usually what he does is sell, uh, uh, will send us a letter to tell us that that appointment is up.
Okay.
Anything else on the appointments, Mr.?
It's all I'm aware of, Mr. President. Excellent work.
Okay, and, uh, I have a copy of this for you guys in your boxes by the, uh, by Friday.
Hey, Carol, he never told you excellent work.
I, I always told Councilwoman Miano excellent work, just what she provided.
And I thank you for that, John.
Anything else under new business?
No.
Anything else on the new business? Public comment, anybody have anything under public comment? Anybody under public comment? Seeing no public account, uh, comment. Announcements of Bio Resource Committee Meeting will be January fifteenth, two, two thousand and fifteen at two PM. We will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day, January nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Plan Commission Meeting will be January twentieth at six thirty PM. Abandoned Blight and Properties Committee Meeting will be January twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen at ten AM. Town Council Meeting will be January twenty-seventh at six thirty PM.